Okay, folks, it is six o'clock and it is Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. I am calling the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. We're in the council chambers for this meeting. Candace will start with roll call.
Lynn Parrott?
Yeah.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing and the public hearing is the two thousand and twenty-three budget hearing. We'll start with staff presentation.
Thank you. So after many, many months of both staff meetings and staff and council meetings, we finally come to the culmination of the budget process, which is the public hearing and the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And as is typical from year to year, we have seen the city manager budget presentation. And I will review all adjustments to that presentation from that time until now, which was October tenth and October seventeenth. Just because there's typically some new information that comes to us during those months, and so we adjust the budget accordingly. So overall, the revenue and expense budget of the general fund for two thousand and twenty-four is ten million, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. And for all funds excluding the airport and the utility funds is thirty-six thousand, thirty-six million, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. And since the city manager budget was presented, there was an increase in the general fund revenues of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars in property tax revenues. And that is to cover the following expenses: six hundred and thirty-two dollars for an increase in wage and fringe from what was presented back in October. A two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollar increase for the general employee retirement contribution rate update. An update for the contribution rate for retirement for protective status employees in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. An increase in the amount budgeted for the two thousand and twenty-three audit, which is conducted in two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And an increase of three thousand, six hundred dollars in the rent for an election polling place. And that is for the Brasky Center to reflect the days that the Brasky Center will not be available for the public to rent. So that is an increase to the elections budget for two thousand and twenty-four. Then in the capital projects fund, we have an increase in expenses for the Badger Book purchase of four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And one thousand, forty dollars in the bus purchase cost. And that is being covered by a general fund reserves, along with the other amount that is contributed by the general fund reserves for CIP. And that amount is five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And then in the taxi bus fund, we have an increase in revenues for the federal taxi bus grant of three thousand, five hundred. Increase in the state grant for taxi bus of twenty-two thousand, seven eighty. And then a decrease in the amount of fund balance that we were planning to use in the taxi bus fund because of those increase in revenues. We, we have a decrease in the amount we budgeted for fund balance usage. And then I just want to update you on the statement of assessment that we received from the state of Wisconsin. The final assessed value for the city with the TIF districts included, and this is assessed value, equalized value, is eight hundred and five million, one hundred, six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That is a net increase of three million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven sixty-eight over two thousand and twenty-two. And those, that overall increase includes increases in residential assessed value of two point nine million. Commercial assessed value of two point three million and a decrease of two point one million in manufacturing assessed value. And the manufacturing is assessed by the state. The total personal property assessed value increased by point nine million. So overall, the up-dated proposed tax levy is five million, forty-eight thousand, two fifty-eight, which reflects an increase of thirty-two thousand, five seventy-four from the city manager presented budget. And the, that is for the general fund. And then for the debt service fund, we have one million, five ninety-six, one sixty-eight. Three hundred thousand of tax levy for the capital improvement fund. And that yields an assessed tax rate of seven point, seven dollars and twenty-six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, which is a zero point two percent increase from last year. And with that, I'm going to hand over to the city manager.
Thank you. And so just to review for brevity's sake, we'll go over the changes in the actual slides as this is the third time now that the council has seen them. The first change here is on slide number twelve. We start getting into some of the numbers, looking at our pies here. So as Nicola had mentioned, with the different changes that have arrived through the refinement of the pies, you're seeing the overall property tax up to a three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven from the previous three million, eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirteen. Moving into slide thirteen, the pie again slightly changes, but like the previous, the, the percentage isn't changing. It's refinement on the numbers within the slices. Essentially, you're seeing the total general fund expenditure increase of twenty-six thousand dollars. And again, that's impacts from the expenditures that Nicole had read, read to you off of the staff notes. On slide fourteen, then, for the all funds expenditures, a couple of changes here, not necessarily on the pie pieces. There are some small fluctuations, but they stick out a little bit more in your different captured amounts there. You're seeing the fire facility is pulled out separately from the CIP, from the previous ones. As well as that is in the CIP, there is the increase for the Badger Books and then also for the bus CIP. In this as well, changes from the previous is in TID six and TID seven. We're accounting for the updated borrowing of those notes for the extended years. And then we have the added ARPA expenditures. And then in the water and sewer CIP, we're up to the five million, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred from the four, from the previous number. And that's in regards to the meters replacement program, which we accelerated. The next change then is seen on slide seventeen, when we're getting into, or just a reminder, no changes here, but a reminder that the budget is including compensation wages changes, anticipated for a average seven percent for the general employee and an average seven and a half percent for WPPA members. In slide nineteen, I would like to point out one, let's say, update, but oversight on my part. The increase of the fifty percent of office assistant to parks and wrecks or the apportionment to ninety percent also includes reclassifications for the duties that position is performing. In slide number twenty-five, you're also then seeing the increase in the CIP budget that has the Badger Books on the top line. It's the increase of the, of, up to twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars was previously at twenty-five thousand. So that increase reflects in there. And then on twenty-nine here, as Nicola had just described, we're showing the increases in the two thousand and twenty-four levy amounts for the general fund. And then the total on that column then is updated. So you're seeing then an, or the, the overall change then of a minus two point two percent for the levy. And then on this one here, you're seeing as indicated as well, in the first addition of the, or the first, the first projection of the budget, we had it at a seven point zero four, and that is now at a seven point six two for your mail rate.
Two six.
I'm sorry, thank you, seven point two six. And then finally, change on the impacts. As we've had multiple discussions, this budget does, still does not address the concerns we've had in regards to the crosswalk at Jenner Towers. As you saw on the staff note and maybe iterated in conversation tonight, the bottom line is, is if we condone and we declare that area a crosswalk, then we're going to be obligated to, to, to have a crosswalk that's an ADA compliance. So it would be about a two hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar investment to bring that project into ADA compliance. As iterated in the note, I think a more budget neutral solution would be to enact the ordinance. And we can bring those, you know, parking spaces offline, one hundred and ten feet, as recommended. As well, work with law enforcement to put periodic speed checks in there, whether it's cruisers or periodically trying to accommodate for putting in the radar sign to mitigate speeding on that road. And we do have further discussion on that with the CIP to understand if a, using a TIF seven is an appropriate expenditure for that and ensuring that if we were to do that, if we were still able to close that TIF. But that may or may not become a added talking point. So those are the changes to the slideshow. Pending your questions, I would turn the floor back over to yourself, Madam Chair.
Okay, questions on the budget? We have, we have been over this, started in October, staff started far before then. We have talked and re-talked and talked some more. So, questions? I think I'm just going to go down the line here and ask. Bob, any questions? Jason?
No.
Kathy?
No questions, but I do have a comment. For the public and the folks here, one of the line items that is increased was approval to buy the Badger Books. Could you please explain to people that may not know what that is?
Sure, and I'm going to hand over to our city clerk, and she's much better educated than I am on Badger Books.
Sure, we are going to be doing quite a bit of education to the public as this rolls out. But essentially, it's an electronic poll book. I'm sure the main question everybody's going to want to know is, is this connected to the internet? It is not. It is a closed system. It has its own server, own router. Like I said, we will be educating the public a lot more as we roll this out, but we are very excited. This is going to streamline a lot of processes for us. It's going to make the voting day, election day, better for the voters. It'll be more efficient. So we are, we are quite excited, so thank you, if I could say that. But yeah, any other questions about that, I guess?
So I'm assuming that you'll have training periods for the people who are poll workers, who are, are regulars. And just a little bit more explanation, Candace. My understanding is that when you go in to vote, you still present your ID.
Correct.
But it used to be that they would have a book there.
Correct.
And you would somehow, they would have you sign, you know, whether you were upside down or whatever.
Correct.
Is that the process? Is that the point where you see the change?
Um, yes, everything's going to actually still appear. You're just signing a screen versus paper. It's going to still be the same, as you've explained. Yes, you're still presenting your ID. You still have to be a registered voter. All, all the rules are still in place. Nothing has changed as far as that goes. It just is going to look a bit different. And like I said, hopefully, our lines will be shorter and everything will be more efficient. We're very excited about the registration process. That'll be a lot more efficient as well. So, yeah, but we will definitely will be having quite a bit of training. The, the Badger Books themselves are quite easy to use. They walk you through, when I say they, I mean my election workers, they walk them through all the steps, you know, and it gives explanation right down to kind of this is what you're saying, this is what you're asking from the voter. So it's, it's a quite, quite a nice system. And there are municipalities around us that have been using it for a while. Lancaster is actually one that's been using it from, kind of from the beginning when it came out. So they've had it for, I think, six, five, six years at this point, and they're overall very happy with them, so.
So this does not change the fact that you get a ballot? And then you go to a little booth and you mark your own ballot and you put it in a machine? This is basically when you come in and sign it?
Correct. Yep, you still get a paper ballot, you still go to the booth, you fill out however you'd like to vote that day. And then you still put it in the same tabulator that we've had for the last six years, so.
Yeah, good. All right, Ken, questions?
Yes, excuse me. I want to have brought up about Jenner Park, Jenner Tower. And so I asked Howard Crowfoot to bring it up at the appropriate time. I have, I'd like to make a motion to change that budget amount to make an improvement there for the people that live there.
So I think what we would need at the appropriate time would be a, a motion to adopt, to adopt the budget with an adjustment.
Or no, it would have to be an amendment. Well, there would have to be an amendment.
Not, the amendment would be if the budget had already been adopted. Since we haven't actually adopted yet, it would be an emotion to adopt the budget with an adjustment. And the adjustment would be whatever the council member would want in terms of revenue and expenditures. And then the council would need to, the motion would have to have a second and then be voted on.
But I'd that brought up the appropriate time.
I, I think this is, Howard, do you want to talk about the Jenner Tower crosswalk?
I think we've, I think we've worked through a lot of this. There's, there's a lot of information in there regarding this to include a proposal by Mr. Malischke from the Community Safe Routes Committee. There was the update based on the, the last Community Safe Routes Committee, where the committee recommended at least twelve thousand dollars be added to the budget for improvements. They did not say necessarily a crosswalk, but they said improvements. But I, I have all that information in here. I don't know that we, do we need to go over that again? Or I, I think it's been.
Does anybody have questions about? I mean, it was delineated on pages, if you're in the electronic version, pages one twenty-four to one thirty-one, I believe, in the budget material. So if anybody has questions on that?
No questions, just comment.
Okay.
Has, at any point, someone from Jenner Towers, the management, came to one of these meetings and offered to be a part of the solution? Was one part of my questions? Has any, is anyone aware?
I'm not aware of any.
Second part of my question, has anybody stopped by the park over there in the area that we're talking about? I happened to tonight. I think I observed seven or eight cans that are being used as cigarette butt ashtrays. I observe a private grill on the west side of the location. I observe a number of private chairs and cushions. I see a bird feeder. I see some other things left there. And quite frankly, for people to use a park and, and to, and to use it as their own is a wonderful thing. But I'm not sure about asking the taxpayer to then add in additional costs to, to dress this site up, especially when then I take a look over at Jenner Towers, the building itself, and I see that there's no smoking signs all over the area. So I almost have to, you know, make an assumption. Jenner Towers says you can't be here, you can't socialize here. So we've moved across the street and set up our own little socialized or social place, and that's okay. That's what our, our, our parks are for, as far as I'm concerned. I'm just not certain that I need to get up every morning and look at the taxpayers going off to work and coming back and ask them for some more money to make this a more grandiose spot than it already has been provided for them at taxpayer expense, especially when I don't have Jenner Towers even here for the conversation, when it's their people. That's all, thank you. No need to.
Okay, any other questions, Ken? Otherwise, Lynn, do you have questions?
No, I have none.
And Todd, do you have questions?
Not at all.
Okay. Um, then the next thing, I have had nobody register to speak in favor of the budget. I've had nobody register to speak against in the budget. I've had nobody to speak in general. We've finished questions. Any more council discussion on this budget?
I guess my only question would be if we were to do option one, where we eliminated some parking stalls within one hundred and ten feet east of Jenner Parking Lot. Is that something that we decide tonight? Or?
No, I think it would have to come back as an ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, to eliminate parking would take an ordinance change. There is no cost to that. The paint lines on the, there's, you know, those basically have no, no cost. But if we want to bring that back and say, the improvement we want to make at the present time is to eliminate a couple of parking spots to, to improve visibility in the area for cars exiting. I mean, I think Bill Cole, our attorney, has been pretty clear in, in his communication with us that if we actually declare this a crosswalk and it's not ADA compliant, we put ourselves in a libelous position. Well, we could eliminate parking and it.
Well, we could do that without declaring it a crosswalk, couldn't we?
That's exactly right. And it doesn't have any budget involved.
We don't, we don't do that tonight. We would have to.
No, we would have to, we would have to have that brought back as an item, a parking, I guess. I mean, we just did an amendment to the parking in downtown last time with the parking by the library. So it would be a similar process to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Right on.
All right, Candace will vote. This is on resolution twenty-three, thirty-four. We'll take them one at a time, so we'll have a second public hearing shortly.
Parrot, or? I'm sorry.
Just a minute.
Just for clarification, we're voting on closing the hearing, correct?
Closing the twenty-three, thirty-four resolution, yes. Voting on that.
Closing the hearing?
Closing, yeah, it's number seven. Close the public hearing.
Cool, yep, thank you.
That's what we're closing, the public hearing. All right, Candace will vote.
Parrot? Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, is there action? That, somebody would make a motion.
I have a motion.
Okay, Todd?
I move to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirty-four, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of thirty-six million, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars as presented here.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt resolution twenty-three, thirty-four, appropriating necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city for the year two thousand and twenty-four. Candace will vote.
I move that we amend the motion. And this pertains to Jenner Towers, Jenner Park.
Okay, what's your amendment?
My amendment is to add to the budget. I believe the amount given was twelve thousand dollars, and this will improve by the Safe Routes Committee.
Okay, I hear an amendment. Do I have a second?
We clarify what the expenditure line item would be for that amendment. So we, we would be adding twelve thousand. Can we, can we explain what the twelve thousand would be spent on specifically, so we know how to incorporate that into the budget?
Howard could speak to that, but it would be spent on the items that are within the twelve thousand dollar budget and that we would not be putting a crosswalk across the street. Well, that's out. There's also another place where a crosswalk should not be put in. Would that, would not be ADA compliant. So it'll be looking at selection of items that are doable within the twelve thousand dollars.
Just a second later.
We can make this work. We can make it work.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to amend?
I believe it's something that we should be doing for the people, and I think it's important. And so we spend some time ready, working on park improvement. I think we need, do also work as far as improvement of the area around Jenner Tower.
Is there a second to the amendment?
So next question, so are we going to be spending the twelve thousand dollars on the signage or the?
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be up to the, to the DPW to what to select as far as what he, what he thinks is possible to do.
So could those be?
I'm not specifying exactly what he's supposed to be doing.
So Mike?
He's gone through this whole list here, and you have a number of pages on it already. And I assume you've gone through this, the things and darkies making comments about some are not doable, but there are things that are doable. I think it's something that is important as far as to say that, well, the owner of Jenner Towers doesn't come over here at all and show up and speak for his property or her property, whoever owns it. I don't believe in that situation as far as a comment.
Can I have a question? So you're saying your amendment would be for a non-ADA compliant crosswalk?
Well, that's.
Can't be a crosswalk.
Well, I mean, the, the twelve thousand dollars would include ramps, right?
I don't think so.
If you look at the.
Not necessarily. We're talking about signage. There is one recommendation for, for radar speed signs. There's other, other potential investments, possibly removing parking stalls that would not create a non-compliant crosswalk.
I didn't know if Ken was talking about option two, the accessible ramps on both sides of Mineral Street.
No, there's, there's a number of things that are talked about. There's pages here you have to go through. And so when you start on, I have page thirty-three, it says, it does not fund all requests the CIP needs brought forward, semicolon, including an added crosswalk at Jenner Towers. And then there's another page where it says, according to the city attorney, in some, I would recommend against establishing a new crosswalk that is not combined with ADA requirements. So we cannot put in a crosswalk because it's not ADA compliant. But there are other things that we can do. And this is what I'm saying, which we take and look at as, and doing for these people. And not just saying that, well, there's cigarette butts here and so forth and can butts and so on. I think there's something that is necessary for these people. They have come in, they've spent a lot of time working on this, going to meetings. They brought it up. They, they want us to do something about it. So I think the time for us is to do some action, to do some things that are doable with the twelve thousand dollars. And then beyond that, we have to look forward to what's going to be done in the future. And how soon the future will, will be following or doing something to improve that whole street.
I guess my understanding of this whole thing is that there are things we can do right away that are very minimal cost. You know, not really needing an amount of twelve thousand dollars to make an impact. And I feel like, let's start with those, see how that goes. And then if we have to do something more, then, you know, look at it at that time. But, you know, it sounds like there's some impactful things we can do right now that are very minimal in terms of cost and hopefully will help the, the safety of the area.
I just, I disagree with that because there are things that we can do that are beyond just the minimal. So the twelve thousand dollars will help make improvements.
So would the twelve thousand come out of like parks and wrecks because it's the park? Where would, where would the twelve thousand come from? Jennifer, where would it come from?
Have to add to the tax levy. We would add that to the levy, so we would increase it instead of thirty, we would increase it twelve thousand dollars. We aren't talking about taking money away from anybody that I know of. So we are talking about adding money.
I, I would say, I would agree with the council president, except to say that the, the member that made the motion could specify whether he wanted to decrease an expense line item somewhere else or whether he wanted to increase the tax levy to cover the twelve thousand. And then he would need to get a second on that amendment.
I am, I have. I, um, I have done this before as far as, uh, going down and making, um, amendments to the, the budget. And my experience has been that I have not had to specify where the money is to come from. This is a staff division, de- decision that needs to be made. So this is not my decision to go into all the, the books and say, well, we're gonna take it from this place or this place. That is something up to the staff to decide, not me.
This question, is it possible to make some sort of middle ground here? I have not happily been in this section of the city at night, but I'm guessing that there's a lighting issue and most likely a, a pedestrian nighttime safety issue involving people using the downtown to include the Jenner Towers people. Um, perhaps that, uh, incorporated into this twelve thousand dollars along with this parking invisibility situation to allow for pedestrian cross crossings in the area during daytime. Um, something that we can at least agree upon that benefits a few more than just a couple handfuls of people within the city. Something that makes the whole downtown perhaps a little safer, the use of that park at night perhaps a little safer for others. I'm looking for something just a little bit more than the benefits.
I'm, I'm, so Bob, just a minute. Bob, uh, could you report, uh, or somebody report, uh, Clint uh, on the lighting situation there? I believe there was some improvements made at Jenner Park, uh, during. Uh, so could you, uh, perhaps elaborate? Because Todd, you're right, there was some lighting issues, but I believe that Shannon, working with Bob. So Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, we had, uh, two of the three, uh, exterior pole lights are, are now working. Uh, Shannon did bypass the ballast and put in LED lights. So that, that part is, is much better. Um, the lights are also on on the shelter itself. Now, there is no lights actually at the intersection that are on the park. So I'm not sure, you know, the intersection would be on the west.
The Oak Street and Oak, Oak and Mineral intersection.
Yeah, right.
There's no, uh, street light there.
You're right. There is, I don't know if there's a street light, but there is nothing, there's no poles in the parks that would be, uh, be improved or be repaired. That wouldn't have any impact on that. So I, I don't know if I could speak to the actual, the street lighting on it. Howard probably might be able to reflect.
I think another thing to consider here is that, uh, we're dealing with many people who are disabled. And so to me, you have a special group that you're gonna be helping so that it's not a matter of people being able-bodied to, to get across to the park, to move in the area. But, uh, they have disabilities. So we need to give them some help as far as getting around through the area and getting, getting to the park and making it safer for them in the area. So this is another major factor that I see. And to me, the purpose of the council is to help people. And to help people, we need to do things for them. And so if we, if it means that we don't get a truck quite as soon as we wanna get a truck, if you wanna talk about something that's not, uh, as far as, um, particular item, as far as what has been mentioned so far, I think, uh, this is something that we need to do for the people. And our job as council members is to serve the people. Our job is to help the people. Our job is not to say, I don't believe these people need help. And I think we need to help them as much as we can.
Kathy?
I, I don't think that there's a person in this room that doesn't feel like we, you know, that we want. My biggest concern is the, the safety thing. We, obviously, an ADA crosswalk is not in the cards at this point. I would prefer to look at the parking spots, but I'm very uncomfortable agreeing to an increase of twelve thousand dollars without specifics. How is it gonna be spent? Whose responsibility is that going to be? To figure out and please everybody for whatever, I mean, it sounds like there might be a whole little mishmash of things and I'm.
Well, Howard has gone through, uh, pages here, uh, things that are possibilities. And, uh, so those that need to be taken a look at and those are things that can be done depending upon the cost. So that this is not a, a, a question without an answer or without answers.
Okay, uh, Ken has, uh, suggested an amendment, uh, adding, uh, no, uh, allocating twelve thousand dollars for, uh, improvements on East Mineral Street. Uh, Ken, I will need you to clarify as to whether this is a reallocation of money within the budget or if this is money in addition to what we have been discussing.
That, that is a question I can't answer because the staff could, uh, change something around within the budget as far as timing, or it could be new money that is put into the budget.
Well, I, I, I think you have to decide one or the other.
This, this is something that the staff has to decide. You're asking me to decide it?
I would disagree with that because.
It's not my role.
Uh, it, it in fact is. We're, we're passing a policy budget here tonight that's gonna allocate these types of things. And if we're making significant, significant changes thereafter, we're obligated to come back and do budget amendments within the framework that we have. The problem that we would have, Ken, in, in saying that it's, um, the, you know, the folks on this table's, uh, decision to make that is that I might be taking away twelve thousand dollars from a program that's equally important to one of the other six here tonight. Or I might be adding twelve thousand dollars onto taxpayers, uh, of constituents of the, the seven here tonight. So, uh, we do need to have a, how you would like it appropriated. If it's a, a replacement of another line item that's in there that's going to be put into, uh, parks or public works for that specific project, or if you'd like an additional twelve thousand put onto the tax levy. And is kind of an indicator, again, you know, we benchmark it at a fifty-one thousand is approximately a one percent increase on the tax rate. So at a twelve number, you're, you know, probably a shade over a point two or so.
Well, I'm still in favor of the project. I think it's very important. And it's important as far as helping these people.
For the record, I'm in favor of your project too, but I'm not, I'm, don't think it's fair to pull another twelve thousand from anywhere that we have not already discussed. For one, it's been time and then the p- it's still somebody else's money. So, I mean, I, I have a affinity for, I love, my dad's over there. I want them to be safe and that kind of thing. But I also, um, if the, if we can add money to parks or if that, we can do amendments to parks, I would rather see money going to hiring someone to be there on the weekends. So the bathrooms are open at the exclusive playground because we have more people who put more money into that place that we can facilitate. So I mean, there's a balance. We, there are a bunch of needs that we can, uh, that we have, I think. Um, as a community person, as a rep and as a representative here. But are we faithful to the people's money that is there? And that's just my thing. I, I totally get it. I really wish we could do all the stuff that we want to happen. But if we don't, if it means pulling more tax money and having the people complain some people don't even notice people on Jenner Tower and they would not understand how at the last minute we pulled that money. I'm just, that's just how I feel. I, I don't think anybody here doesn't want anybody to be okay, but it's just.
Okay, we, we have a suggested amendment of adding twelve thousand dollars to the budget for this option with, uh, no, uh, Ken, you're gonna have to say whether it's going to be reallocated or whether it's going to be new tax money. Because otherwise, I mean, uh, otherwise we're asking the staff. Uh, that is not a proper decision. We're setting the tax.
I will say then that this is money that'll have to be allocated, new money. So twelve thousand dollars of, out of the total that you're talking about. What, what, what percentage increase does that result in?
Another point two percent.
Point two percent.
On the tax rate. So the, his amendment is twelve, uh, his amendment is add twelve thousand dollars to the taxes specifically for, uh,
To help.
The Mineral Street, uh, uh, East Mineral Street, uh, mm, area.
And so.
I'm not calling it a crosswalk because it's not a crosswalk. So do I have a second to this amendment?
So I think it's something that should be done and people should be doing something about it. And to say that, well, we are concerned about it, but we're not gonna do anything about it except what we can spend for a little bit.
Do I have a second?
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
That's, I don't agree with that. People need to stand up here as council members and help people. Do not, do not look people, look aside at people and say they don't need help.
Ken, I, I don't think anyone's saying they don't need help, but I agree with Jason in that, like with the twelve thousand dollars, if the ramps aren't put in, that twelve thousand dollars would be spent on painting for the no parking. And the no parking painting and the sign, um, according to this, would be about two hundred dollars. There could be the temporary speed radar signs that the police department has that could be placed there periodically for no cost. The other money would be eleven thousand dollars for a permanent sign. And it seems like if we could do the painting and then put in the temporary sign periodically, we could see how that works. It would, I mean, I don't see a big difference in the benefit between the twelve thousand with the permanent sign and the almost nominal cost of the temporary sign and the paint.
Okay, my question to the council is, if we don't do something here this evening to improve the area, how many years will this project be put off? When do we expect to put this project into effect? Are you gonna put in two hundred thousand dollars next year to improve the whole street? Are you gonna do that? And what, what is the future? What are you proposing for the future? Let's leave these people, leave them go their way they're going right now. Don't help them. Where do you expect to get the money in the future? Two hundred thousand dollars. The Safe Routes Committee is asking for twelve thousand dollars. They recommend a twelve thousand dollar. What's the future?
We have an amendment that's been suggested. Do I have a second?
Well, I, I'm very sorry that nobody in this council is willing to stand up and do something as far as helping these people.
Amendment.
Please face the public and say, I didn't help these people.
Uh, Ken, I think that you're, uh, I, I think Bob has expressed that we are all in favor of helping people. I think Kathy has said that too. I think Todd has said that too. I think there's everyone here, but we all have different ways.
There's not, there's not enough help here.
Candace, uh.
You're putting people aside. You're saying they're not important.
The amendment died for lack of a second, so we will vote on the budget. Parrot? Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to the second of the public hearings then. This is resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five authorizing the salary and rates of pay of the permanent employees excluding union and library personnel and the city manager for the year twenty twenty-four. And is this you also?
It's me, but we've already, uh, talked about it. The city manager has discussed it in, uh, his presentation. Um, so I, I would just, uh, uh, reiterate once again that the, uh, salary resolution reflects the implementation of the updated City of Platteville Compensation Plan, which includes an overall payroll increase of seven percent. Um, with a minimum wage increase of at least three percent and seven and a half percent for police officers um, as included in the budget that was just adopted.
Okay, questions on the salary resolution? Oh, I, I'm supposed, that's the staff presentation. Any questions of staff? Bob?
Uh, no, thank you.
Jason?
No.
Kathy? Ken?
No questions.
Lynn? Todd?
Questions.
Okay, um, uh, public statements in favor. Again, I've had nobody register to speak in favor against or in general. Is there any additional council discussion relative to the, uh, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five? Now I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Uh, Candace will vote. Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there common council action then? Does somebody wanna offer a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I move to, I move to adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five authoring the wage rates of permanent employees excluding union and library personnel and the city manager for the year twenty twenty-four.
And that would be resolution twenty-three thirty-five.
Oh, yes, twenty-three thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Jason to approve resolution twenty-three thirty-five, authorizing wage rates uh, for the year twenty twenty-four. Candace will vote. Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is then the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion or action. Uh, we have the council minutes from November fourteenth. We have the payment of bills and I believe those were on our desk tonight. Is that correct? They were not included in the packet. Board, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I'm imparting Carla wages to the Commission on Aging. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol, taxi driver licenses, and then a temporary Class B, uh, uh, permit to serve fermented malt beverages and wine for the Pa- Platteville Public Library Foundation on, uh, Friday, December fifteenth for the pop-up book shop. And then we have resolution twenty-three thirty-six sewer rate increase. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve our items listed under the consent calendar.
I'll second.
A motion by Lynn, second by Bob to approve the consent agenda as presented. Candace will vote. Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I've had nobody registered, uh, to speak during citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Uh, i- is there any council member that has any thing from a committee that they wanna bring up? Or, uh, yeah, I see, I see Candace waving her hand kind of back there. So we'll let Candace speak.
I guess the appropriate thing would have been to fill out a sheet for you. Um, so we are having, uh, this Friday is December first, believe it or not. And it's the first day to circulate, um, nomination papers. If you're interested in serving on the council for the city of Platteville, we do have three positions that will be up for election in twenty twenty-four. It is, uh, District Three, um, an at-large position as well as District Four. Um, I have handed out the paperwork to, uh, the folks that currently sit in those positions. Um, if you have any questions on any of that, please reach out to myself or Colette and we'd be happy to help you through that process. And anybody listening to this who's interested and has any additional questions, you can find all the information needed on our website, but please don't hesitate to reach out to the clerk's department. We would be happy to help you.
And I would remind everybody that, uh, the museum is currently sponsoring, um, wagon rides, I guess, is what I would call it. Uh, so, yeah, you might wanna go online and register for that. Another thing, uh, I believe on December fifteenth, uh, it's a special, uh, evening on Main Street. I don't know what, what, I don't know what they're calling it.
Officially, it is a, a Christmas on Main, but that is not to be dissuasive. It is an all-inclusive event, a holiday celebration, uh, for all to partake.
All right, uh, reports in your board, uh, packets were from the Community Safe Routes Committee. Uh, Jason?
Um, just wanted to remind people, I think coming up is going to be a public meeting that's open to go over.
meeting that's open to go over the results, the recent, um, but, uh, study done to look at, um, sidewalks, um, transportation, um, walkability of the city. Um, I'm trying to remember offhand when that is.
Is, is it not Thursday night?
I want to say sometime in December.
Uh, maybe I've wrong Thursday night. Bob, do you have it? Howard?
I remember getting it in an email. I'll have to look, but, um, yeah, I believe it's being done by, um,
Southwest Regional.
Southwest Regional Planning, yeah.
It's about their, the grant that, or the, there was a special grant for them to look at trails and walking paths and crosswalks and other kinds of things. Is that correct?
pedestrian and bicycle.
Okay. And, uh, Howard, would you please get us all that date and, uh, see that, uh, maybe Clint has it for this Friday's council update? Uh, yeah, I've heard people talking about it. I just don't know when it's on. I don't know why I thought it was this Thursday. Maybe it's some other Thursday.
I think it is on a Thursday.
All right, um, that is the end of the, um, reports that were in our packet. Uh, we'll move on to the action items in our agenda tonight. We have resolution twenty-three thirty-seven approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association. Clint?
Madam Chair has presented, and we, uh, last time we took a look at this, again, the major changes seen in the proposed CBA is the wage schedule changes and our cost of living adjustments, uh, to amount again as presented in the budget, an estimated seven and a half percent increase, and that's an average. Uh, we incorporated a slight, uh, side letter amendments to our vacation, uh, from the previous contract to match what we're doing with our general employees. We're adjusting residency requirements from fifteen-mile radius to a twenty-five-mile radius. It is more expansive. Uh, but the idea there is we're going to be able to recruit from a little bit bigger catch basin. Um, we're eliminating city liability with some legacy language that allows for participation in our health insurance plan post-termination and, uh, or retirement. And the additional expenses created by the agreement in twenty twenty-four will be, uh, funded with the additional supplemental aid provided through the shared state revenues. Total estimated impact in twenty twenty-four for adopting this collective bargaining agreement is seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollar increase uh, to the budget with wage infringes. Uh, it is recommendation tonight that the staff approves the collective bargaining agreement with the language provided. And then, uh, the collective bargaining agreement is in your packet, uh, digital on page one forty-nine in down. Madam Chair.
Okay, questions on the, uh, agreement reached between the city and, uh, WPPA? I believe this is the one remaining, or this is the one union that we can currently have that we, uh, within the city.
That is correct.
Questions? If there are no questions, then I would take a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty-three thirty-seven approving a twenty-two thousand twenty
Okay, we have a motion?
Problem with that, she said twenty-three dash thirty-seven should be twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Well, actually, the resolution says twenty-three dash thirty-nine. The sample motion says twenty-three dash thirty-seven. So who knows what the number really is?
Sorry, it should be twenty-three thirty-seven is what we have on the resolution, and that matches what we have on our agenda. And that is the language on there.
Actually, the resolution says twenty-three thirty-nine on mine.
On what page?
On page, uh,
Right underneath the staff note.
One, one forty-eight.
Okay.
I'm hitting the same thing except mine says twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Yours says twenty-three twenty-six?
I just showed it to her.
Twenty-three thirty-nine.
Uh, mine says twenty-three thirty-seven. Jason's is twenty-three thirty-nine.
And let's call it twenty-three dash oh-one and be done with it.
Tracking. Thirty-seven, I, yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, and on page, on page one forty-seven in the blue for the title, I have twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Right.
Yes.
So the correct number should be, the correct number should be twenty-three dash thirty-seven. I apologize that there's some typos there. We will get anything that needs to be corrected, corrected appropriately, but thirty-seven is the correct number it should be.
So I will second Kathy's motion. So.
So this is the collective bargaining agreement with the corrected resolution number of twenty-three thirty-seven. If your resolution itself, the language, uh, that requires signatures, does any other number, it will be corrected to the correct number. I think that's very interesting. So it's twenty-three thirty-seven.
Thank you for the.
We have a, uh, motion by
Kathy.
Kathy and a second by Todd. No, I think Todd was second it because, did you say twenty-three third, twenty-six or something?
I said a correction or what she had said in the sense that there was the wrong number, that's all. But I, I think somebody down there seconded.
Bob?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Kathy, second by Bob. Uh, we'll vote. Parrot?
Yes, I just saw a typo that just did the, it said professional instead of professional, but yes, yeah, it's good. Just, yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
Casper? Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we got through that. Contract twenty-five twenty-three. Fuel supply twenty, for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six.
Yes, thank you. Our current fuel contract expires, uh, December thirty-first of this year. Uh, we solicited bids, uh, two fuel suppliers, uh, put in bids. The bid tabulation is enclosed. This, uh, contract would be for city and for UW Platteville. The university did sign an extension of our current intergovernmental agreement. So, um, staff is recommending that we, uh, award this to Allegiant Oil at their bid price of twelve cents per gallon over the wholesale price.
Questions? If there are no questions, I would take a motion for the fuel supply contract twenty-two thousand four, twenty-two six.
I move, move to award contract twenty-five dash twenty-three to Allegiant Oil at the bid price of twelve cents per gallon over wholesale price.
Second. A motion by Todd, second by Kathy to award this contract twenty-five twenty-three to Allegiant Oil. Um, Candace will vote. Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the information and discussion items in our packet tonight. The first ones is the PFAS supplemental information. Howard?
Yes. Um, all this is, is just, um, codifying and, and writing down and correcting some of the things that I said last time regarding PFAS. Um, it stands for per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. There are eighteen compounds in this family that are under investigation by EPA and DNR. Uh, we had questions about where the closest, uh, um, uh, places that have PFAS. Um, most of them are in the, uh, Madison area, but I also looked uh, at not only the Wisconsin, but the Illinois and Iowa. Um, actually, we have a detection in Cuba City, but below the health limits. Uh, Illinois had two locations and, uh, Iowa Dubuque had a location. Uh, I just wanted to at least show it and clarify it for you. I, I, we're not planning on taking action. This is just giving you additional information.
Clint, did you want to say anything about potential action or not?
So we're working with our Corporation Council. Um, there is two, um, litigation lawsuits out there with three M DuPont. And, uh, we have until basically next week to decide if we're opting in in those class action lawsuits of which we don't have detectable levels right now, so we would not be awarded anything. The other option is to purposefully opt out and retain our legal rights to pursue litigation against those two companies at a later date. Um, the, what we're told the worst thing to do is to not do either one of those. So in working with, uh, through actually attorney Chris Nelson, we're hoping to arrive at what our best position is, but we don't really have a magic eight ball to know what it looks like in the future, but there is, um, the possibility that, you know, those, the bar might be lowered, uh, lowered on, um, if studies come and show that less and less of those amounts are impacting the health. Uh, so we want to preserve ourselves for in the future. If the, if that bar is lowered, that we still preserve uh, potentially our rights to entitlement for damages and efforts to try to fix it.
Good. All right, any additional questions on the PFAS? About every night on this news, you can hear about these. I mean, about every place. Okay, uh, the next item would be our resolution, a resolution providing for the borrowing of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with general obligation pro- as a general obligation promissory note, Nicola.
Thank you. Uh, so we talked a little bit about this at the end of a rather long budget work session. Um, and I, so I will try to keep this brief and will entertain questions if you want to go a little deeper into the numbers. Uh, but essentially what's happening here is, as you know, um, TIF six is the TIF district that has struggled financially. Um, but as we look ahead, uh, and with the addition of six years of extension, um, we now see that the TIF district is anticipated to close, uh, basically breaking even, if you like. And so the, the, um, and so the city would not be responsible for having to cover any deficit at the end of life of the TIF. However, in the short term, uh, there are annual deficits, uh, that are looming on the horizon, including for twenty twenty-three. Uh, and, but, but in the long run, those deficits will be more than covered by tax increment in the later years of the life of the TIF. So what we're proposing to do is to refinance in the short term um, with the longer-term, uh, repayment coming from those last couple of years of life when the TIF has generated enough increment. And by doing that, we would avoid having to advance from the general fund each year that there is a, a cash deficit. Uh, so what we're doing, um, today, uh, I'm just bringing information at the next council m- meeting, it will be action um, to pass a resolution for a promissory note, a one-year note, uh, with ClearBank uh, at the proposed interest rate of three point nine nine percent. And then in, in twenty twenty-four, that one-year note would be refinanced with a longer-term note that would cover all of the years, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, where there will be deficits, uh, projected. Of course, this is all based on projections, so the news might get better or it might not, it might, uh, not be as rosy, but, uh, but right now we're anticipating that we will have those deficits and then we would um, be able to pay that longer-term debt off. So a one-year note this year, uh, a refinance of that note and funding for the, uh, the next few years till twenty twenty-eight. And then all of that debt would be paid off by the increment in the TIF, uh, to close in the blank. Any questions about this one-year note?
So my question is, you are talking about this current year, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
So this is a note to pay a debt that we currently have.
It's a note to, uh, to provide funding, um, for a debt payment that will, uh, so technically, we would be funding our debt payment for twenty twenty-four, but because we would receive the proceeds of the note in twenty twenty-three, it means we would avoid having to advance from the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. So it's a little bit of an accounting dance, but, um, it achieves the objectives that we, which is to, uh, preserve our unassigned fund balance for other needs of the city.
Any other questions? Looks good. All right, let's move on then to the third item on our information and discussion. This is extending the city's engineering services contract for twenty twenty-four. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Um, basically, uh, this started back in twenty-ten. Uh, we sent our request for proposals. Uh, Delta Three Engineering has served as our primary engineering services consultant since January two thousand eleven. We've had additional RFPs since then. The latest RFP, uh, uh, included calendar years twenty twenty-one through twenty-three. So our current expire, contract expires at the end of this current year. Uh, we do hire other engineering consultants for other work. I won't go into all of that. Um, our optimal time for sending these out would be late spring to early summer so that an incoming consultant can, can work with us on the CIP. Um, it didn't happen this year. Um, so, um, we're recommending that we have a one-year extension. Um, there's no additional impact to the twenty twenty-four budget uh, so that we can do a, a full RFP process for services in calendar year twenty twenty-five. Uh, Dan Dressens is here to, uh, talk about, uh, the services that they've uh, provided in the past, what they're, uh, planning on providing, uh, for services in twenty twenty-four and some challenges and, and other information for you.
All right, uh, thank you, Howard. Uh, as Howard said, Dan Dressens with Delta Three Engineering. Um, a few weeks ago, I met with Howard and Clint, uh, to talk about some items uh, for, to extend our, uh, engineering contract, uh, that we've been working with on the city since two thousand and eleven. Um, we've been working with the city a little bit longer than that, but that's when we actually had our first engineering contract. So, um, put together a little presentation uh, to kind of go over a few items. Um, basically, we're going to look at is background and services provided by Delta Three Engineering over the past, uh, uh, twenty years, basically, um, a quick list of some projects, a recap of the two thousand twenty-three projects, uh, some challenges with past and future projects, a quick list of the two thousand twenty-four projects. Um, Clint and Howard wanted me to just do a real quick overview of construction bidding, contract and administration um, services and kind of what those look like. And then, um, put together just some, some issues that we've been having with some contractors in recent years and some ways that we could look at maybe addressing those issues and the pros and cons of, of that. So a little bit of background of Delta Three Engineering. Um, we started in November of two thousand and three with five employees. Um, myself, Bart Nice and Scott Chico, who is, uh, recently retired. Um, and we were located in the incubator building. Um, in two thousand and six, uh, we moved locations within the incubator to accommodate growth of our business. Um, in two thousand and ten, we purchased the former Platteville Convention Center, which Kathy would used to always remind me that we took away the only convention center in town, but we did make that our business in May of two thousand and eleven. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, we purchased, uh, Southwest Design, uh, which was in the former library that was at the intersection of Furnace and Chestnut Street. And then, um, in two thousand and nineteen, we opened up a satellite office down in Dubuque in the Millwork District and um, nobody knows where Delta Three is at, but everybody knows where the Midwest Curve is at. So we're right next door to them. Um, and then currently, um, as Scott retired, Um and then currently, um as Scott retired, uh there are uh four owners of Delta Three Engineering. Uh myself and Bart are major shareholders. And uh Joe Bailey and Mark Dignan, who are both from are both in town here, uh they are minor shareholders. Um current staffing, we have forty uh total employees, uh six professional engineers, uh one structural engineer. Nine engineer in training, which is our younger engineers, uh two project managers, a professional land surveyor, five engineering technicians. Uh four survey technicians, three administrative tax, we have an IT person, and we have nine interns. Um this was the first year we hired an intern from out of you not from W Plaville, so. Uh we're gonna um have about seven interns this coming summer. Um and we are currently currently licensed in five states, uh Wisconsin, Illinois, Florida, Colorado, and Iowa. Uh services we provide, um obviously, uh we do civil and municipal engineering. Um this here is a picture from this year's Jefferson Street project. We do environmental engineering such as wastewater uh treatment. Uh we do water treatment as well as stormwater management. Uh structural engineering. We do building and facility design. This is a picture of the Family Advocates Building uh that we worked on this year. Uh we do mechanical and plumbing design. We do grant writing. We do land development services. Uh this is an aerial photograph of the new AY project down in the Dickieville Keeler area. And we do land surveying. Um here's a list of past projects we've done for the city of Plaville since our inception in two thousand three. I'm not going to go through all of them, but as you can see, um we have worked on many projects within the city of Plaville, and these are just the public projects. Um we've worked on several private projects as well. Um but we do also help out, and that's kind of in the right-hand side there. We do help out uh city staff with uh plan reviews. Uh cost estimates, uh miscellaneous reports and studies and technical assistance that are too numerous to to list. Um a quick recap of the two thousand twenty-three city of Plattville projects. So this map right here, this is a map that we we do um for all of our public information meetings. Um but this year, um the projects we worked on were Jefferson Street. Uh we did McGregor Plaza Sanitary Sewer. We did sidewalk project out in Keystone Development, which is Ted number five. Uh we uh designed a project, a storm sewer project by Fasinal, but due to budget issues, uh that was not approved. Uh we worked on some alley repaving and incubator parking lot. As well as we did a design for West Adam Street, but that project was put on hold um until this year, do so do some configuration changes with the fire department. Um a little bit more in-depth on Jefferson Street. Um we had our bid opening on March third. Uh the awarded contractor was temporarily excavating. Contract amount was just under nine hundred and sixty thousand. Uh they've got a few uh closeout items left to do, but we're anticipating that to come in about twenty thousand dollars under budget, under contract amount. Um notice proceed was April twentieth, start date was July fifth. Um and just some other dates, the substantial completion, um that's when the street is supposed to be completed and usable. Uh per contract was September twenty-second, and it was actually October twentieth, and we're going to talk about why it was a little bit late uh in a little bit here. McGregor Plaza, uh that project was bid, the it was opened, excuse me, on March first. The successful contractor was G Pro Excavating out of Monfort. Contract amount was two hundred and seventy-one thousand and some change. Estimated final amount is just a little over two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. The uh the project came in a little bit over contract amount due to some scope changes. We had a little bit of additional work. Um up on Roundtree Avenue and a little bit of extra paving uh um on one of the parking lots. Notice proceed was April seventeenth. Um they were very prompt. They got at it um on April twenty-fourth. And um substantial completion per contract was September first, but they were actually done some June seventh. And they probably would have been done by the end of May had not um our paving contractor um decided to go pave somewhere else for a couple of weeks. Uh next project Keystone Sidewalk, um bid opening on that was February twenty-first. The awarded contractor was Owens Excavating and Trenching of Hazel Green. Contract amount was just a little over seventy-five thousand. Uh estimated final pay amount is going to be about eighty thousand dollars. Once again, we've had a little bit of a scope um additions on that project. Um the project is covered by Ted number five. Uh notice proceed uh was April nineteenth, start date was October twenty-fourth. And per the contract, we gave him thirty-five days to do this project. There was no significant um uh milestone deadline for this project. We just wanted to have it done in two thousand twenty-three, and so they started on October twenty-fourth and they were finished November tenth. Now they do have some cleanup and some landscaping to finish up that they will be completing here yet this year. Uh two thousand twenty-three sidewalk replacement project, uh bid opening on that was February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh the awarded contractor was G Pro Excavating. Uh they are not a concrete contractor, but um essentially they were the general on the job. Uh to basically cover for a subcontractor dull concrete. Uh contract amount was a little over fifty-six thousand. The final amount was just a little over sixty-three thousand. Once again, we had some scope changes to this. Uh there was a a driveway that had to be redone from Hickory Street. Um after a homeowner requested a change, um there was some damage to a to curb and gutter on Cedar Street. That was not as a that was not the product of a contractor or homeowner and a few other miscellaneous items. Um notice proceed February twenty-eighth, start date was April tenth. Um per contract, it was ninety days, but they did not get done until October seventeenth. Once again, we'll touch base on that here in a minute. Uh last project that was started in two thousand twenty-three was alley paving and incubator parking. Uh bid opening was September sixth. The awarded contractor was G Pro Excavating. Contract amount was ninety-seven thousand or just a little over ninety-seven thousand. We're anticipating that to come in sort of spot on. Notice proceed was October ninth, start date was not April two thousand twenty-three. It was actually the middle of October. Uh substantial completion per the contract is November seventeenth. The alleys were paved on October twenty-eighth. And the over the final overlay of the incubator parking lot will occur next May um at the request of the paving contractor. Some other projects that were closed in two thousand twenty-three. The pickleball courts and the Westview Tennis Courts Project, uh Business Highway one fifty-one, Cedar Street, Hickory Street and Gridley Avenue. UW Plaville and Smith Park Restrooms. So some challenges with past projects and what we're anticipating to be coming up in the future as well. Um. Number of bidding contractors. What we have seen over the last four or five years is a major reduction in the number of contractors that have bid. Which is part ca- is partly causing some of our delays. So prior to two thousand twenty, and this is just coincidental with COVID, it has nothing to do with COVID. We were having seven to ten contractors bid every single project. For the city of Plaville, we typically bid all the projects in February and March, maybe April, um if it's a a project that got added on later on. Um trying to beat the rush to the contractors. Um so like I said, seven to ten, um less than three or four years ago. And as you can see, every year they've dwindled down, and now we're looking at an average of about three contractors in two thousand twenty-three. Um unless something happens um where other. Portions of the state do not have projects, the Madison area, La Crosse area, or maybe even out of state Dubuque area. Um unless they decrease the number of projects, we are not anticipating to have a larger pool of contractors than we have in the past. Like I said, that does make it challenging to get um enough cut, you know, to get contractors in here. One, to get competitive bids. We've gotten great bids, don't get me wrong. But if we have seven bidders versus three bidders, obviously, we should be getting better bids. And the other thing is just the number of contractors to actually complete the work. Lack of subcontractors. Right now, um with the retirement of the Lawnger Brothers, um there is one. Concrete contract subcontractor in our area, and that's a gelly concrete at a Richmond Center. They do great work. However, the issue is is that they cover all of southwest Wisconsin. So you think about every community in southwest Wisconsin that's doing a street project, a sidewalk project. A gelly concrete is more than likely being involved into it. So that does cause some um scheduled restraints. We also have one paving contractor. Um Mathi Construction, Iverson Construction, River City Paving, it doesn't matter. It's all the same contractor. Um and they have limited number of crews as well. So as I mentioned, what this does is this can drastically impact schedules for projects due to availability. I mentioned McGregor Plaza. McGregor Plaza was ready to be paved prior to. Um Memorial Day, but did not get paved until the second week in June, just because Iverson had to go pave a highway project. And basically, our project got pushed back. Um utilities. Um utilities is a challenge every single year, and this is not the city water and sewer or um storm sewer utilities. This is basically um primarily um telecommunications. Uh we have got a great relationship with Alliant, but our telecommunications partners sometimes are just not there. Um so for example, your relocation of utility poles. This um uh two thousand twenty-one, we met with Alliant and Century Link. Uh Lumen, now Bright Speed, um about moving a power pole on Second Street. Um that got moved about two weeks ago, I think, Howard, correct? So it took them about two years to move a pole, and as a result, um we had to put temporary sidewalk in along Second Street when we did that project. Um two years, like two summers ago, excuse me, on Cedar Street. Um the uh Lion Energy came in and relocated poles, but we had to wait for uh. Bright Speed to relocate their facilities from the old poles to the new poles before we could remove those old poles. As a result, uh the curb and gutter guys, curb and gutter contractor, a gelly came in. Port all the curb and gutter gap, put gaps around the poles because they were not able to pour it. And the city had to pay extra for cut the contractor to come back and pour that. So these are just some challenges that we have. Um a lot of time from my staff, from the city staff, you know, communicating back and forth. Um and then the final item is unmarked utilities, um and that becomes a challenge when we call in locates and nothing is marked. Um happens on a regular basis, um not just during, well, it happens all the time on design basis, but even during construction. Uh we have from time to time where uh the utility companies are not locating items, not locating them properly, and therefore causing delays in projects. Um availability of materials. Uh this was an issue um on Jefferson Street this year. Uh this is why the uh temporarily excavating did not start until July fifth. Uh they were not able to get their sanitary sewer materials until that time, and then by that mean their manhole structures. Um so that caused about a one-month delay. Later on in the project, um fortunately, they were able to keep themselves busy, but they had the same issue with delivery of storm sewer structures. Um we have a uh single supplier in the area, County Materials. Um single local supplier supplier, I should say that. They've got a plant in Madison, Holman and. Um Akonamawak. Um the next closest places are up in the Green Bay and Eau Claire areas. Um so they are our local um supplier. Um availability of water main pipe valve services, et cetera. Um this was not as big of an issue this year, but as a it was an issue in past years. Um in the spring, uh mainline pipe is difficult to obtain because everybody's buying it. In the summertime, water services are hard to get by because everybody's buying those. So it's supply and demand um due to uh material shortages. And we are assum- assuming that two thousand twenty-four is going to be very similar, so it's good. It's always going to be a challenge with schedules. Project closeout. Of the projects that were finished out in two thousand twenty-three, they all had to do with project closeout. Um completion of punchless items. Um we walk through with Howard and his staff um to at the end of a project. We put together a list of items that need still need to be addressed by the contractor that need to be completed. It's getting the contractor back here to finish those items, primarily landscaping. Landscaping is the number one issue that we have on punch lists. We'll touch base on this a little bit later on, but we're always having problems with landscaping. It's, you know, the grass doesn't grow. The grass doesn't grow fast enough. I have weeds. I have this. So there's two issues with that, um primarily contractor poor performance. They did not do a good enough job of putting down the black dirt. Um a lot of times what we're will they'll have is they'll bring in the dirt and they will shred it. Looks absolutely gorgeous, but it fluffs off nice and puffy. And then in the spring, it settles, and then we have to go back and fill in holes. Um so that becomes very difficult. Um and there are some homeowner responsibilities with landscaping as well. Um and we explain this to homeowners every year that just because we come through and reseed your lawn and mulch it and and whatnot and make it look nice. You still have to mow it and maintain it, and we have some issues with that as well. Um attendance at public information meetings, two thousand twenty-three was the best year we best attendance we've ever had, and we've been doing public information meetings. For over ten years now. Um typically, we have a we have a January public information meeting when we talk about the project in its inception and design. And we typically have a very low turnout. Um I think this last year, we I think we had about ten people at ju- ten homeowners at Jefferson Street. In previous years. Um Howard and I sometimes joke, we put over-unders, and usually excluding Howard and myself and staff is usually it's about four or five. At the very most. Um ma- in May-June, we also have a public information. This is after the project's been out to bid. We know who our contractor is, and we've had the pre-construction meeting. We have a little bit um better attendance there, but once again, very low attendance. Um we have our monthly construction meeting. We started those in two thousand twenty-two. Two thousand twenty-three was excellent. Um we had a a great turnout for two thousand twenty-three. Uh two thousand twenty-two, however, um Hickory and Gridley was very poor. Um I think the one public or the one meeting we had, uh there was two um renters walking down the street, and we thought they were coming to the meeting and they walked by. And so we had zero turnout for one of the meetings. Um Cedar Street, Cedar Street is a mixture of owner occupied and rentals. Um the owner occupied attendance was excellent. The other attendance was very, very poor. And the West Main Street, once again, that was almost exclusively owner occupied. We had a great turnout. The 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 trend here is when we're in areas of town where it's owner occupied residence, we have great turnout for the most part. But when we get into the rental areas, we have very little, we have very poor turnout, and that makes it a challenge because then those homeowners, those property owners, excuse me, they do not know what's going on. Um pricing, um as everybody knows, pricing has increased, makes it a challenge to meet budgets. Um paving prices from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three have gone up forty percent, and for small projects even larger. Sewer prices have increased thirty percent uh from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, and obviously other pri- other items have increased similarly, but um and as everybody knows. Um contractor issues. Um over the last couple of years, we've had some very bad luck um with contractors uh going out of business. Uh West Main Street cover project, Dean County Contracting uh literally went out of business. Um the bond company came in and finished the project. SNL Underground did that in the end. Um M Joma, they were the primary contractor for the inclusive playground prod- project. Uh right now, uh they are in the process of working with the subcontractors and their bond con- bonding company to get their subcontractors paid. Um at one time, there was over six hundred thousand dollars owed from the contractor to the subcontractors. So that's why a lot of stuff came to a screeching halt is because nobody was getting paid. Uh dull concrete. Uh they did the uh they did the sidewalk work. They had, excuse me, they were the subcontractor for this year's two thousand twenty-three sidewalk replacement prop- project. They came in um April, May, they knocked out a little over fifty percent of the project and then. Didn't show up again. Um constantly phone call, talked with them, talked with G Pro Excavating, who was a general contractor. Finally, we found a Facebook page, Facebook uh uh notice that said they were out of business and they were having a sale. So the the general contractor, G Pro, had to find a new subcontractor to come and do it, ended up being a gelly concrete, and they came in and finished everything up out. Um and then, of course, we had the poor paving at the pickleball courts. Uh contractor did stand behind their work though, and they tore everything out and replaced everything. Um permitting, permitting is a challenge. Uh for example, the Roundtree Streambank Project, um that project has not started. This is the second. Grant that was received. Um first, the issue was cricket frog, uh worked with PCA, got that issue taken care of. Now we're working with trout and using riprap. Um right now, the DNR does not like to use a riprap on stream banks. They would rather you just grade them back. Well, unfortunately, we don't have the room to do that. Because we have buildings and trails and streets and bridges. So those are some issues that we're working through with that. Um our two thousand twenty-four project list. So this year, um on the uh um on the uh. Project list is the, excuse me, here, is a. Uh Soden and Gray Street, which is right next to where uh Jefferson Street was completed this year. Uh there is going to be West Adam Street um with association to the fire station. That project, once again, we designed that last year. Um we'll be probably tweaking things a little bit there and getting that taken care of. Uh Cam Street Water and Sewer, uh that is a precursor to next year in two thousand twenty-five, when the DOT will come in and redo those streets. Uh the Mount View. Uh Trail Phase Number One paving, which goes from the former rural excavating over to Mitchell Hollow Road. Um and then we also have alley repaving and the two thousand twenty-four sidewalk replacement project. Um a little bit of background on construction bidding, contracts and construction administration. Um kind of what the role is of Delta Three, what the role of the city is, and how. And how this all ties into contractors in, in getting their work done. So the bid process. So the first part of the bid process is, is Delta Three, we complete the construction plans and prepare the project specifications. We review those plans and specifications with city staff. And then um, approximately two weeks prior to a bid opening, we use an online bid service called Quest CDN. Uh, this is the industry standard now for the state of Wisconsin. As well as um, Iowa and Illinois, kind of a Midwest thing, it's nationwide, but they're very, it's very prevalent in this area. Um, basically what it is, it is instead of Delta Three. Um, going out and sending notifications to all the contractors that we've ever worked with and all the builders exchanges that we've ever worked with. Um, Quest CDN, they basically, when we set it up, we have keywords in there, paving, water, sewer, sidewalks. Landscaping, et cetera. We post that bid and any contractor that does landscaping, water and sewer, they get a notification that this project is out to bid. Um, we've, we've received um, more bidders on some projects. We've received some bidders from out of the area, for example, M Joma. Uh, I'm Joma, probably would have never ever bid the inclusive playground, looking back, maybe that would have been a good thing. Um, however, it was nice because we did get contractors that were interested from a long ways away. And for a project of that magnitude, um, we felt that was important. Um, after the project is put onto Quest, um, they can download the plans and specifications. They contact us with any questions and clarifications, and we issue the necessary addendums to, to answer those questions and clarifications. Um, and then we also use Quest, uh, they have a V bid option. And we do online bidding through that, a contractor, instead of having to come in and turn a bid in to Howard's office. Uh, they do it online. The nice thing about that is it's a spreadsheet form, there are no mathematical errors. There's very few issues. So when we have a as read bid opening, we know that that contractor's numbers are correct. Um, we do accept paper bids though, for, for, for projects, just in case. With regards to contracts. Um, we prep, there, the contract documents prepared after bids are received, reviewed and approved by the city council. Um, that's the process that Howard writes a staff report, I have a recommendation letter, we make sure that we um, uh, meet all the budget requirements. Um, per Wisconsin state statutes, the city is required to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And um, we can have a whole conversation on, on about what the lowest responsible bidder can be, but essentially. If the contractor is the low bid and the city has not had any. Issues with documented issues, excuse me, in the past, then the city um, is ex- is required to accept them. Um, we utilize um, the EJ CDC documents, which is the Engineers Joint Contract Documents Committee. This is a uh, group of contract documents that are used by other engineering firms across the nation. Um, basically them and they're, they're true, they're, they're tried and they're, they're been. Wow, but they've been, uh, uh, they've been scrutinized many, many times with uh, with, with attorneys and contract. Um, I worked with a gentleman from actually ten years ago, uh, nobody that you guys have worked with now. And um, he said they are the best. They have their nuances, um, but they are the best documents. Um, you'll also see AIA, which is the Associates, so Architects Institute. I don't know, it's an architect thing. Um, anyway, they have very similar documents, very similar language, and basically it's kind of all the same. But what it, I guess what I'm getting at is if there was ever a question that we're using document, contract documents that we created, we are not. We are using a nationwide uh, tested document. Um, the contracts require a payment bond. A payment bond is what um, we basically went, or we did not go after, but that's what the subcontractors are going after. With M Joma on the inclusive playground and ensure that they get paid. Um, so that's the purpose of the payment bond to make sure that everybody gets paid. Perform, oops, uh, performance bond, uh, performance bond, that is what basically the city. We seek, went after on the West Main Street cover with uh, Dane County Contracting. Basically guaranteeing that they will complete the project. If the contractor does not complete the project, the bonding company must fulfill those obligations. Uh, we require certificate of insurance uh, to make sure that they have all the proper liability automobile, et cetera. And then obviously a signature is by the city and the contractor. Um, the contracts also set out completion dates for the project. And they state the liquidated damages for the project. One thing to note is that liquidated damages, it's a dollar amount, it's typically a dollar amount per day, but this is not a penalty. Penalties, contract penalties in the state of Wisconsin for municipal contracts are illegal. Um, it is an agreed upon amount that the contractor wa- is willing to pay or forfeit to the owner. In event the work is not completed in a timely manner or by the completion dates. So we have two parts to our uh, liquidated damages. Uh, they have to be that the meet the, can complete the work by the substantial and final completion dates. But they also have to do it continuous and under uninterrupted. So for example, McGregor Plaza this year, G Pro started in April, their completion date was September. They cannot come in and work for two months and then leave for two, or two weeks, excuse me, and then leave for two months. That is also a, a, a reason to go for the liquidity damages. Um, the intent of the liquidated damages is to cover the cost. Due to the owner due to a project not being completed, such as additional inspection costs. And incurred costs due to project not completed. The best example of this is you, the city hall burns down. The city has to go rent another building. The new city hall does not meet the completion date and therefore the city has to continue paying rent at their other location. That's the best locate, that's the best example. Now, on a city street project, a little more difficult to address that other than the inspection costs and staff time. Um, typically, uh, there are different amounts between the substantial completion and the final completion dates. So our substantial completion date that's set out in the contract document, that's when you have to be able to use your street. For example, it's paved, the landscaping is completed, final completion and then is for the, is to complete all the little small items, the punch list items. The next part of the project is a construction administration, so this is our, this, and this is Delta Three's role in it. Basically, this is, once the project has started, contract has been sta- signed. We verify and quantify the work that's been completed, we prepare the payment applications, we prepare change orders as necessary. We will complete a final walkthrough with um, city staff. Sometimes with the contractor as well, we will then prepare a punch list or punch lists, depending how many times we do the walkthrough. Um, for the project, we will distribute that to the contractor. And then um, after the punch list has been developed, uh, we will determine the data substantial completion. Uh, we will obtain lien waivers from the contractor. We will prepare the final app, final payment application. Once all, once all the punchless items have been completed and we prepare the construction record. So that's kind of a really quick overview of the bid process, contract process. And then how the contractors get paid and how the project gets closed out. So my next item here is some solutions to some contractor issues. Some of the things that we've been have, we will call it repeat violations and not by the same contractor. Um, nearly every contractor that we've worked with for the last five years, at some point in time, has had an issue with closing things out. So that's the biggest thing, getting contractors to finalize projects. So one way that we could do this is we could potentially increase the amount of liquidated damages. That is in the contract, currently it is one thousand dollars per day for substantial completion and two hundred and fifty dollars per day for final completion. With the idea that the thousand dollars per day covers any additional inspection, uh, city staff time, et cetera, for the contractor to be there. Normally, if the contractor is running late on a project, that means they've been. Kind of dragging along and they've already burned up all the allotted inspection time by the city staff, um, and the engineering firm. The liquidated damages, however, they must be reasonable to be enforceable. We can't just go and stick ten thousand dollars a day on a liquidated damage, just because we want to make sure the contractor gets the work done. If we were to do that, the contractor would say, talk to my attorney. And then we would go through the litigation process. And in past um, situations where we've had that, where the, the, the owner and the contractor had been kind of fighting about liquidated damages. A judge will say it has the, the liquidated damages have to be reasonable. Um, as I mentioned before, if it's not reasonable, it may be considered a penalty, which is legal in the state of Wisconsin. And the other thing is, is with the liquidated damages, there's potential backlash from contractors. If enforced without justification. Could completion date is September first, they complete the work on September second, they get a thousand dollar fine, excuse me, thousand dollar assessment. Um, on it and uh, the contractors, they talk, they're going to start catching up on that. So we have to be very careful with assessing liquidated damages, it needs to be for a specific reason. Um, a few years ago, the Broadway Street project, phase two, which was a portion that went from the Neil Wilkins School out to. Um, Faraday City Limits, the contractor uh, came in, uh, did all the water and sewer. Tore up the entire street and left for two months. That was justification for liquidated damages, and I believe that was over fifty thousand dollars, was it not Howard?
I can't remember the amount, but I, I do.
It was a substantial, it was a substantial amount of money, and at that time, I think we were only doing five to seven hundred and fifty dollars per day. That was justifiable for liquidated damages. Someone who's a, you know, a day or two late, it's not justifiable. So we have to make sure it's justifiable. Um, another uh, way to, to getting contractor to finalize projects is to add incentive to a contract. And what this is, is this is an additional compensation to contractors if they complete the work ahead of schedule. Uh, this was done when Main Street was redone, it was um, also on Broadway Street, um, the contractor. Hit part of it, but then end up losing it all. Um, and what this is, is the idea is, is we want to incentivize the contractor to get the work done. Prior to the completion date, because we're impacting uh, businesses. Uh, schools, et cetera, um, and we don't have any, any issues with that. Um, the key here is, is we want to make sure that the amount is enough to encourage the contractor to finish early. Uh, during the Main Street project, um, I believe there was a discussion about, well, how much should that be? At the time, it was twenty-five thousand dollars, because twenty-five thousand dollars is going to buy you a, a nice vehicle. Well, twenty-five thousand dollars isn't going to buy you a nice vehicle anymore, it's going to have to be fifty or seventy-five thousand. So it has to be something that's well worth the contractor's time to basically pay for the extra overtime potentially to get the project done. Um, the concern about this is impact on budget. Talking about budget tonight, everything is tight. If we start adding on fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand dollars to get these projects done sooner. Is it worth it and can that be sustainable for a long period of time? Um, increased retainage withheld. Currently, we withhold five percent, which is the Wisconsin statute amount on a contract. Which means that if we have a two million dollar project, we're withholding one hundred thousand dollars. That is a lot of money. In the past, Howard and I have discussed that one hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to come back and fix landscaping. And fix a water service or fix a driveway. But apparently contractors these days do not feel that same way. So we have, we as the owner and engineer, may, we can reduce the percentage of the retainage. Um, if we feel that there's not much work left to be done. For example, two million dollar project, someone has to come back and fix one driveway, that's five thousand dollars. It's very difficult to say, hey, we're going to hold a hundred thousand dollars on you because you have to finish this five thousand dollar driveway. We would reduce it to maybe twenty thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars to cover the work and then fifteen thousand dollars in incentive, but not the full five percent. We can also retain more if it's deemed justifiable. We have a very small project, say, uh, a little, like a, one of our sidewalk projects that's in the twenty or thirty thousand dollar range. They have, but you know, five percent of that is going to be very minimal, uh, we need to have them come back, we can hold withhold more. The key is, is increasing the amount withheld as an incentive contractor. But we need to review the legality of doing so. We can't, like I said, we can't have a hundred thousand dollars of retainage and only five thousand dollars worth of work left to do. So that would be something that if we were looking to something like that, we have to be careful. Um, though, another way of, of controlling contractors is we can pre-qualify contractors. And technically, if you look through the statute, it's called proof of responsibility. Basically, what we're doing is, is prior to bidding, we are certifying that these contractors are responsible contractors to do the work. The goal is to allow only quality contractors to bid on city projects. Excuse me. Unfortunately about this, you basically pre-qualify based upon past project performance. Whether it's in your community or in a different community, uh, their financials, they have to provide a financial statement to show that they are sound. Um, the number of employees and amount of equipment and any other factories events deemed important by the owner, which can include current workload. Now, the issue with this is that our two contractors that have defaulted in the last two years. There's probably a greater than fifty percent chance that they would have been pre-qualified. Because Dane County Contracting, what little bit of private work they had done for this, within the city of Plaval, nothing for the city, but within the city, had been done. Well, their references checked out. The, we, we make them, uh, if we do not send, we, we do not pre-qualify, but we do have them provide a qualification statement. And they do have to provide some minor financials in there to show that they are able to do the work. Uh, my guess is that if we get a financial statement from Dane County at the beginning of the year, they probably would have passed. And so that's the tricky part of this, is that even though with pre-qualifying and going through this proof of responsibility. We could still potentially end up with a contractor that goes out of business, but the intent hopefully is not to. Um, the key here though usually is communities that do the pre-qualification. A lot of times what they're looking for is they've had bad experiences with contractors. And the one community that I currently do work with that pre-qualifies, that's exactly what happened. They had a bad experience with a, with a contractor, not just, I should say, bad experiences with the contractor, not just on one project or multiple projects. Therefore, they pre-qualify and do not allow them to bid. So the pros um, of, of doing this pre-qualifying is contractors have good past performance. Uh, financial stability and they, we, they can prove that they have the resources and manpower to complete the work. The cons, um, one issue is a proof of responsibility must be completed five days prior to bid and be approved by city staff. Um, a lot of times contractors, especially when we get into maybe the March and early April seat bidding season. They're not necessarily sure which projects they're going to bid because they think, hey, I've got this project, I'm going to get the Soden and Gray Street project. They don't get it. Five days later, the uh, Brown Tree, uh, excuse me, the uh, Mountview uh, Trail Project is bid. Well, they didn't get the pre-qualification in for that project, therefore they cannot bid. So if you do not get pre-qualified, you cannot submit a bid, the bid can sit there, but it cannot be opened. Um, and, and the very first time we did that, the contractor, uh, being a contractor, opened it in front of everybody and showed everybody his bid. Just to, just to prove a point, however, like I say, he was, he was unable to have it awarded to him. Um, another con, it may reduce the number of contractors that bid. Uh, some contractors refuse to bid on a pre-qualifying project, um, just how it is. Um, and then there is a potential increase in project cost due to reduction in number of contractors. Um, I have always assumed this. And I talked to a couple contractors today because I wanted to kind of get their opinion of this. And they said that if I know exactly who can bid and who cannot bid. I know what their prices typically are, and I know what their workload is, and I will adjust my bid accordingly. So that's in, that's one of the negatives of doing this. And another negative, like I said, M Joma and Dane County, probably greater than fifty percent chance of being pre-qualified. Landscaping. Landscaping is the number one item on punch lists. Um, if there's twenty items, landscaping is eighteen of them. Um, and that's not just every single yard, it's this, that and everything. So how do we get the landscaping um, better? Uh, we've talked, one of the big issues with landscaping is we can't get the grass to grow. So adding a watering bid item to the project, and this would be a unit price for watering. And the contractor would be required to water from the time the seed is placed till it gets three inches tall where it's established. If we don't do it after, we do it right when it germinates and it's only like say a half inch or an inch tall, the chances are it could still get dry and die. Um, it will add cost to a project in a dry, if it's in a dry year. Um, it's about five hundred dollars per watering, per ev- per event, um, per approximately a thousand feet of street. Um, Jefferson Street was approximately this length rate this, uh, excuse me, was approximately this um, long. This year. In two thousand twenty-three, because of how dry it was, we probably would have had them watered two to three times, two, excuse, two, three, four times a week. So we're talking about adding anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars per week. And we're looking at, you know, adding that up over time, that's another ten to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars that could potentially be added on to a project. We need to determine, and obviously this is just for information, but is this something that we want to pursue? Um, we could add a mo- uh, mowing bid item to the project. Um, this is particularly an issue on the rental properties. Um, the non-owner occupied where, you know, the, the, the students are potentially gone for the summer. Or and, or the um, the, the property owner is responsible for mowing, but they just, they don't get to it on a regular basis. And so what we have is, is we have new seeding, of course, we have seed and fertilizer and mulch. And we get some rain and next thing you know, the grass is growing, but the weeds will grow faster. And what we, what it needs to happen is, is we need to get those weeds mowed off, so it doesn't overtake the grass. And so what this would do, this would be a unit price for mowing. And basically they be required to mow until the grass is three inches tall. Um, and the problem is, is that I don't have, I can't find any unit price, our unit um, price data. Um, and the problem is, is that I don't have, I can't find any unit price, our unit um price data on this. Um, nobody's doing this, but it's definitely something that I think I would rather try this than watering personally. Because this, I mean, the contractor can come by once a week and and mow it. Where watering, I mean, it might be three times a week, it might be once a week. Heck, it may be never, we may have a great season for it. Uh, continuing on the landscaping, some other options for landscaping, um, we can look at sod uh versus seeding and matting versus seeding and mulch. Normally, right now, what we're seeing is we're seeing majority seed mulch or some contractors are putting down the matting. Oops. So the sod, the nice thing about sod is that it's immediately green. Um, homeowners initially like this because all summer long, their front yard's been tore up. It gets landscaped it and then now it's sodded. The issue with this is that it needs to be watered daily. And then in, and even if it rains a quarter of an inch, you still need to water it daily. Um, you look at when they re-sod any type of athletic fields, they are constantly putting water on it. Homeowners need to do the same thing or else it will dry up and die or the weeds will come through. It's also over $10 per square yard plus the watering cost, so it's a very expensive option. Now, seeding with matting um is typically only about a dollar to $2 square, per square yard more than seeding with mulch. Um, but homeowners don't typically like this because that netting can get caught up in their lawn, their their mower decks. And then they're pulling that out. So we have some situations where the contractor does a poor job of putting down the matting. They're coming back and ripping it all out so that the homeowners can mow their grass. And then we have our normal seeding with mulch that ranges in the three to $5 a square yard. Um, but obviously issues with that is the mulch blows away, um, it seems a little bit spottier. So really what we have is, you know, the matting is one to $2 more than the seeding and mulch, but the the sod is is twice as much. So it's definitely something to look at um in the future. Um, couple other ideas, um, require homeowners to complete their landscaping. This is actually going to happen on some of Delta Three's projects in 2024 at the request of the villages that we're doing work in. Um, use a unit price of our three to $5 a square yard and basically pay this homeowner. Um, contractor pays places the topsoil, homeowner is then responsible for final raking, um, seeding, mulching, maintenance, et cetera. Um, unfortunately, most homeowners don't have the ability to complete this work. Um, that's just the reality of it. However, in, like I say, in a couple of communities, they're going to try it this year. Because it's not just Platteville that they're having problems with landscaping in, it's every community that we do work in. Um, the last one would be city personnel to complete landscaping. I don't think anybody wants to hear this. Um, we're talking about staff shortages and stuff like that. Um, but in this situation, contractor would place a topsoil and city personnel would complete. 20 years ago, we used to do this in some communities and it was okay. Um, you know, uh, if it, the problem was, is that city staff have to complete their other debt tasks. So on Monday, maybe it's garbage collection, so they have to go take care of that or it's brush collection, so they do that. So they get a couple hours maybe on Tuesday morning before something else happens. And then it's Thursday afternoon. And now instead of the contractor completing the the landscaping in a week's time, it's a month's time. So it just gets drug out. And so um, so between, you know, timing and personnel, um, that's kind of the uh concern with that one. Ultimately, um, you know, the goal for all the projects is to complete the projects at or below budget amount in a timely manner where everybody is satisfied with the outcome. And that's always our goal on the street projects, whether it's, you know, whether it's a one block or a five block project. We want to get the project done on time so that the homeowners are satisfied. Now, not everybody's going to be happy on a project. If you have 10 homeowners, one's going to be upset no matter what you do. But make sure that the other nine then are satisfied. But homeowner number 10, though, nine are happy, one of number 10 satisfied may not be happy, but that's always our goal because we realize that not everybody's going to be happy, so. Um, so with that, I know um Clint told me 10 or 15 minutes and it's been 45. Um, so I apologize for that. Um, so uh with that, are there any questions um about 2023 projects, upcoming projects? Um, any of the information that was provided? Um, a lot of the stuff on the backend here about, you know, ways that we can maybe try to get projects closed out. I think those are some things that, you know, we work with city staff on and we try to implement and we try to really sit down and talk about the pros and cons of each. What we don't want to do is go implement a bunch of wholesale changes in how we handle contracts. And then contractors, you're number one, are not going to catch it, but you're number two, they're going to, their prices are going to go through the roof. So we just, it's got to be a happy medium that we get the projects done in a timely fashion without drastically increasing our budgets.
Okay, anyone that have.
This comment, appreciate, uh, certainly appreciate your neighborhood informational meetings that you and Howard seem to put together. I think it gives a great opportunity for the residents to ask questions and get answers directly from uh, the two of you and other city staff. I see for those few complainers, I think they get an opportunity to get some.
Any other questions or comments for Dan Cathy?
Um, I really appreciate Dan, the thoroughness of explaining to us all the processes that you go through and it's kind of I'm boggling to think that when you see a work stoppage is sort of like, well, what so and so doing, not knowing who it is, but really explained it very well. But I do have one question. Um, for past projects that you've worked on through direction of the city, at any point can Howard call you and say, can I, I made a note when you said construction records? That you keep them, you keep them forever?
Yes, yep.
Or do you, is that something you turn over?
We turn them over to Howard when I get them done. And sometimes that's a week after the project and sometimes it's maybe a year after the project.
Okay, so the the city always has.
Yes, yes, yep, yep. And we, and we have the records. I mean, there are a lot of time, I mean, the construction records, basically we take a copy of the blueprints, plans, and we basically mark up what changed from the time that we designed it to the time it was completed. But sometimes there's more to it. Um, and we can only get so much information on there. And so Howard, um, or the Water and Sewer Department or the Street Department, they call me directly and say, hey, the Asbilly does not say that this was, you know, this type of water service um inside the house. Can you look at your records? And we have all that.
Any other questions? I have a, okay, Ken, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. First of all, I appreciate all the information. And uh, can a person get a copy of all this from you?
Yeah.
Is the whole thing in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, some of the pictures then, some of the pictures don't come through because they were in and out, but other than that, the other thing's in there.
I didn't have a chance to read this before the council meeting.
No, I didn't have it ready, so that's probably why.
But my question is, um, is this taking the place of the meeting that we're supposed to have on, let's see, November 14th? Uh, concerns about Delta Three, is that? This was in city manager's um update.
This was a meeting that uh we had at staff level and we had, it was the meeting that.
Council members and the citizens. Howard Crawford and city manager are considering one-year extension, so this is the thing we're talking about here.
The meeting that we had and the bullet points that Dan so nice putly together addressed the concerns that were brought forward to myself and brought to you this evening, so this is a result of that.
I brought one issue, one situation to you, and so uh, I guess I'll have to go and talk to you and see how this can be handled. Now, I I guess I'm getting at performance. Performance of the job. What it's, what it's like when they get done. In other words, is the, for example, this was on Deborah Court. Now, the drainage of Deborah Court, the person was complaining about the weeds that were growing in the drainage ditch. So why can't there be uh removal of the weeds and and put in some good vegetation? In other words, how long does it take to kill off the weeds? May have to spray them.
May correct, yes.
And then another thing was that the ground was too rough where you were, whoever was did that job, wherever the work was done at the person's place, so rough ground. Another thing was that there was a lack of uh stone around a a a channel around a sewer line, whatever we want to call a drainage line. So various things were brought up by this person, and so I related those to you. I gave those to you.
Yep, we had a conversation on that.
Now, what's going to happen as far as improvement to the situation at Deborah Court?
Don't have a solution on Deborah Court at the present. Uh, today it was a more in the context of an extension of a contract and in general types of concerns that were brought my way.
So what can be done for better performance?
On that particular project or?
You have a performance bond.
Correct.
If they don't.
Correct.
If they don't do a good job as far as the work, then you you come in and charge them for performance.
Ken, yes, we can. So I'm not a hundred percent sure about what you're talking about in Deborah Court, so maybe we can touch base at a later date and you can explain to me exactly what the can, all the concerns are.
Yes, and I can also tell you the person.
Okay, that'd be great.
The concern is that we are well past the warranty period on that. And so that would be additional cost to come back now and do anything on that one.
We can, let's, maybe I can figure out what you're talking about exactly and what the concerns are, and then we can try to address, and then we can touch base with Howard on the warranty period and what can we, what can and can't be done.
That was one that I came and contacted with. Person calling me up.
Uh, Dan, you you mentioned the dearth of contractors. So my question is, uh, the last couple of years, we've had contractors who have defaulted, including this year with M. Joma defaulting on paying subs. What kind of uh influence is that going to be on future projects as they look to do projects here in the city? I mean, it's all of a sudden, well, I did a project in the city, but I didn't get paid. And I know that they were supposed to be paid by M. Joma and weren't paid, but nonetheless, what you hear is I did a project in the city of Platteville and I didn't get paid.
Um, so we were worried about that as well. So I was asked, so we found out from the, so where this all started was the equipment supplier, Lee Recreation, informed us that they were not being paid. We took it to Joma, Joma would not get back to us. We did, we did some inquiries to other subcontractors. Because we inquired other subcontractors and we asked them about them not getting paid. Um, I guess we got brownie points with them as a result because we were kind of being a little proactive. And so when uh Lee Recreation uh determined that they were going to go after the payment bond, uh, we also forwarded that same information on to uh the a couple of their contractors. So we, even though we were not able to pay them directly, we were able to help them move the process along a little bit so that it could get towards payment. So like I said, we got some some brownie points for that. So um, and from my understanding, I don't think we have to worry about that. Um, I think they think it's an isolated situation just because they're from out of the area. Um, if uh, if it happens with maybe a local contractor this next year and then happens again, then we might have some issues, but I, we're going to try to do everything we can to prevent that from happening in the future.
When uh these things happen, how much more does it cost the city? So I mean, so a contractor goes out of business, but the project has to be completed, but are there additional costs anyway for the city?
So for example, West Main Street, because the project essentially drug on for another six months. Um, there was additional time that we had to spend out there. Um, Howard did, I I don't know if there was anything that the city was able to go to with the bonding company, otherwise typically not. But we did have a liquidated damage on the project, correct?
Yes, um, we, we uh absorbed some like, we we retained some liquidated damages, but our agreement with the bond company was that we would um not uh, you do any additional liquidated damages uh that we could have done so that the bonding company could get the remainder of the contract price from the city in order to to limit the damages because uh their uh their leverage with us at the time was, it was late October, early November, and they said, well, if you guys agree to this, we will make sure that we get a contractor in right away so that we can get Main Street open for you. If you don't agree, then we're going to have to negotiate with you and it might take six to eight weeks before we can come up with an agreement, which would put it into late December before they would send anybody out here to finish the contract. So we agreed to forego the limited liquidated damages in order to uh get the get Main Street back open again. Um, the extra payments that we've made primarily were for Delta Three because of the additional time that they needed to be on the project doing the work or uh supervising the work and and getting things ready. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't the actual contract itself, as I recall, we we so, okay.
And 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 I, and I think, um, so the liquid damages that had been assessed prior to getting involved with the bonding company was around 30 to $35,000. And I know that more than covered any additional costs that we had. So it would, it would just be any additional cost from city staff time that may not have been covered. Um, but we were ultimately, that particular project, we were fortunate, we had already ass- assessed the liquidated damages because they didn't really even start the project until it was supposed to be done. So, well, they tried a couple of times.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that that is uh the end of in our information and discussion items. From the information and discussion items, we will have two items that forward to our December meeting. Uh, that would be the resolution uh for providing of the borrowing and then extending the city engineering services contract for an additional year. Uh, that's the end of information and discussion items. We do have a closed session scheduled per Wisconsin statute 1985 parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, this is on the library transition. So I would take a motion to go to closed session. We will uh come out of closed session and adjourn without action. So this is not an, there won't be action taken. So anybody who who's here for the press or whatever doesn't need to worry that we're coming back out with action. So a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Again.
Okay, uh Candace, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Ken to go to closed session. Session, uh, we'll vote. Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yeah.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries.